Green light.
It was a blue on TV, bad in the nineties.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't forget, if the TV will stop.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals, the December 3rd, 2014 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Tom Wakefield and to my immediate left is Dan McDonald. To my immediate right is Michael Wood, Bill Dunn, and Jane Moran. Kathy Franson is absent this evening, as is Mark McCabe, and our clerk is Julie Howes. We've got to take things a little bit out of water just because it looks like we may have a little bit longer meeting, so. Yeah, oh, excuse me, yeah, we need a motion to open.
Motion to open the zoning board of appeals meeting at seven thirty eight?
And a second by Bill, all those in favor? Okay. The, we had a, I'm gonna read for a record, a letter from the, from the Water District, and this is regarding, regarding Old Town Oil over at sixteen Evergreen Lane in Groveland. It's regarding special permit, one thousand ninety-nine and sixteen Nelson Street, and it's a few oil delivery stores building. This is one that came before the board recently, and this is just, so I'll read it for the record and we'll put it in the file. I'm not sure that we need any action, but it goes like this, "Dear Mr. Liggett, It's come to the attention of the board that a water service has been illegally installed to your building located at sixteen Nelson Street on ten seventeen, two thousand fourteen. I met with Mike Irwin and conducted a site visit at eight fifty-seven Salem Street. Mister Irwin informed me of a precondition condition of the house he purchased from you. I witnessed a T installed after the water meter and a new water service branch that leads to the back of the home. The service exists, exits, excuse me, exits the foundation and runs parallel to Nelson Street approximately four hundred feet through a yard hydrant located in the driveway of sixteen Nelson Street. At the board meeting held October twentieth, two thousand fourteen, the findings were discussed, discussed and the board voted the following. To assess you a five hundred dollar fine and the water service must be removed immediately upon receiving this notification. The service must be removed by a licensed drain layer here in the town, a witness by representative of the department. All costs associated with this work will be paid by you and final inspection will be documented by this department. After reviewing the requirements of the special permit dated June two thousand ten and the file of this project, I've noted a couple incomplete items. One, list of key, list of equipment kept on the premises must be submitted to the department. Two, proper spill kit must be verified at times of inspection. And three, the monitoring well must be inspected and documented. Please be advised, the next board meeting will be held November twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact us. Signed, Thomas D. Cusack Jr., Superintendent." Now, the only thing that I can remember that we discussed at the meeting, and if anyone can remember, was the monitoring well. We discussed that he had to have that monitoring well monitored. Is there anything else that you can recall, do you recall, Dan?
I don't recall.
Well, I think, I don't think there's any action. I just wanted to make sure that we read it and we'll make sure it goes in the file. Okay, let's see. I'm not sure, on two, we have a letter from the Aon Fire Protection Engineering regarding four forty-one Main Street. And here again, I'll read it for the record, but that's, that's, that's an issue with the fire department and not the zoning board of appeals, but just so, since it got sent to us, I'll read it so we have a copy in, on the record. And it was dated, it was, excuse me, it was dated November twelfth, two thousand fourteen, and it was sent to Ms. Elizabeth Gorski, Selectman, Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass. We got an engagement letter, four forty-one Main Street, Groveland, Mass. And it's by, I believe would be Aon FPE Project Number two-two-one-four-oh-two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero. Dear Mrs. Gorski, Aon Fire Protection Engineering has evaluated the existing conditions at four forty-one Main Street in Groveland, Mass. And found them to be in compliance with the eighth edition of the Massachusetts State Building Code, in parentheses, seven eighty CRM. It is noted that the buildings B one oh four and B one oh nine undergo, oh, it is noted, if buildings B one oh four and B one oh nine undergo major renovations, they will require the installation of an automatic sprinkler system required by Mass. General Law, one forty-eight, section twenty-six G. Roof repairs, siding repairs, and painting do not constitute major renovations. The work performed in building one oh, B one oh one is an example of a major renovation. As part of that project, the installation of an automatic sprinkler system and fire alarm system is required. The system, systems are currently being designed and installed. No additional fire protection and life safety work on the site is required at this time. Sincerely, Aon Fire Protection Engineering Corporation, Andrew Shanahan, Professional Engineer, Office Leader." And I think here again, we'll just put that in our file so we have it in that file.
Who submitted that to us?
I'm not sure.
Because it was, it was addressed to Betty Gorski. How did we get it?
I don't know.
The copy was submitted, it was placed in our box.
The Selectman must have given us, given us a copy. The next item that we need to do is the minutes of November fifth, two thousand fourteen. And I, I have read it and I don't see anything, but we'll let Jane can, Jane's a real good proofreader here. The other, the other issue that we have would be, while they're reviewing that, I'll just go over the town of Groveland bill's payable schedule, and that's Julie Howes, zoning board of appeals, administrative assistant, in the amount of four eighty-two ninety-seven. Did you read the minutes? While they're reviewing this, I just want to, for the people sitting here and maybe anyone that's watching.
Can you speak up again?
Yep, just for the people sitting here and anyone watching on TV, I just want to just reiterate that the only item that we have on the agenda tonight is the Eric Harper four forty-one Main Street. And I just want the, everyone out here and the people to understand that the board of appeals job is to enforce the zoning ordinance for the town of Groveland. It's not, it's not that the board of appeals doesn't like what's happening there. That has absolutely nothing to do with deliberations. I think it's all to do with the zoning ordinance and what the zoning ordinance says can be done and that the applicant has to adhere to the zoning ordinance. That's, that's basic. It's not whether we like what's happening or not. It's strictly zoning, and I don't want anyone to get, get, get the wrong idea that we don't like what's going on and we're trying to start business in the town of Groveland. That's not at all. The charge of the board is to enforce the zoning ordinance as they see fit, as they read it. And with that in mind, I'm back to, we all set on the, have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second?
Second.
Second by Bill? Any discussion? Bill? Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the invoice for four eighty-two ninety-seven?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve? Second, second, Mike? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're all set. Now let me read the, we're gonna go to the first item, agenda item, and that is Eric Harper for four forty-one Main Street regarding a special permit, number two oh one four dash four, issued to operate a business park association where buildings are used for contractors and individuals working in the trades for business support storage. And I, I'd like to just repeat that, for business support storage, okay? You wanna?
Come on up here.
See, I was under the misconception that this was gonna be, you were gonna present something other than what we just talked about.
No, sorry.
If that's the case, then, then let me just say that I did have an occasion to visit the site. And it was probably, I think it was the Tuesday after the meeting. The meeting was a Wednesday and it was a following Tuesday. I had an occasion to talk to the fire chief, who, the full disclosure is my neighbor, and I told him I had never been down there, and he asked if I wanted to go. So, so we visited the site. And we ran into Mister Harper at the gate, and I gotta say that I wasn't pleased with how the conversation went. I thought it was pretty clear that the board of appeals at that night wanted the gate closed, and Mister Harper didn't have any recollection of that. That, that concerns me, that, that the applicant who sat one chair over from where he is tonight and throughout the whole meeting, wasn't aware that we discussed closing that gate. So, and another thing that happened on my visit was in going through the project, and it's the first time I've done that, the chief stopped at one site and went inside, and I, I only took a picture because I didn't have a pencil to write down and I'm not using this for anything other than to bring my mind back into focus, but it was Truly Green. Now Truly Green is a lawn company that has actually had two desks with employees there and a break room, all their equipment, and it appears they're running their operation out of that building, all sheet rocked and, and so in looking at the minutes of the meeting of the approval, Mister Harper said that this was gonna be used for the storage of ladders and construction equipment. But here, here we have Truly Green operating a business there with a sheet rock building. You know, that's, that's clearly in violation of his approval. Across, across the, another building, and I, I just can't, I'm sorry, I can't read it, but it's a white, white truck with a green tree on it. There's another, another landscaper that's operating out of the building across the way. And then the towing company, which, which has the glass door, I was able to see the lift, and they're operating a repair of equipment in there. I fail to see how running businesses in these buildings is storage of ladders and equipment, construction equipment. When, when the people are coming down, there was three trucks on each one of them sitting there that day. And when, when the people are coming there to get their assignment for the day, that's not storage. That's running the business there. And that's not what, what the approval was for.
John Christopher for Eric Harper for the record. If I may respond, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I think when I came here in October, relatively new to the situation, I used the phrase failure to communicate.
You speak up, please?
I'm battling a cold, so you'll have to bear with me. I, I use the phrase failure to communicate, and I think what we're, we have here is Mister Harper came in in March. Can you hear me now?
Very good.
Okay, I apologize, but I can barely speak.
He's a loud speaker.
Mister Harper came, I mean, Mister Harper proceeded on the idea that this type of activity went on under the SD property in the sawmill in Lumbyard. They had offices, they had space here, they had things like that. He felt that getting business usage support, that phrase itself covered that type of activity. And though it wasn't being done by one entity such as SD, it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, which in my view was less detrimental than a sawmill Lumbyard, and they carried on that type of activity. When I was here in November, after the hearing, which was quite lengthy, we, I came, I got up and Mister Dunn made the suggestion that we need to start over. And I represented to this board then that we were going to file for site plan approval, aquifer protection approval, Concom approval, and I filed a new application on the twenty-fifth of November. And you can call it an amendment, you can call it a new application. We paid six hundred and fifty dollars. And it lays out the business plan for that property and what our idea of business usage support really means. And if you look at it when you get it, it's very definitive, and it's a broad overview of the type of activities that we would like to operate under this special permit. Now, if we have a public hearing on that, you are certainly free to trim that down to allow this, not to allow that. We also are proposing that all administrative activity would, would take place at the front building. We're gonna have a conference room, a common conference room, where the people who are leasing can go to the front building, which is a retail establishment, and they can use their computers, there'll probably be a printer there, they can do their paperwork there. And if they want to meet with the public to maybe seal a deal on sprinkler or whatever, they can meet the public out front there and not in the back. And we also are proposing, and I can only highlight the permit because I don't think it'd be appropriate to go into a detailed analysis without all the abutters being notified. If anyone who leases there wants to do administrative work in the shed, so to speak, they'd have to come to this board for a special permit separately from the special permit granted to Mister Harper to operate that type of business. So that's where we stand now. And I think there's been a massive, in my thirty-eight years, a massive miscommunication here. And we're trying to set it right, and we're trying to start over again.
So you're referring to, you actually took my Cool Hand Luke comment?
Well, you're better looking than Paul Newman, so I.
Well, for the record, under non-conforming uses, this is so everyone understands. Non-conforming uses in the zoning ordinance for the town of Groveland, and I'm gonna skip right to the pre-existing non-conforming because the date that Mister Harper purchased the property, it was exactly a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Correct.
Okay. So what it says on the ordinance of six oh one point one, and, and starting at the, it says "pre-existing non-conforming structures and/or uses may be extended or altered provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority as defined in the bylaws of having jurisdiction over such structures and uses that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more or detrimental than the existing non-conforming use of the neighborhood." So it was based on that particular part of the ordinance that the approval was given to Mister Harper to rent the buildings in the area for storage and of contractors' materials. And, and we said the, the front building, because they were selling retail stuff, but I believe he said he was gonna rent it for office space, but I said they, they were selling retail in that particular building, that would, that would, you know, that's what was going on prior to, there was offices in retail. But the back was all going to be cold storage. So I was, you know, and I know the board feels the same way. It, it came back, the stuff came back to us that there's, there's probably, let's see, there's B and B, the towing company, and two others, at least four businesses running there. And prior to Mister Harper buying a property, it had been vacant for, since I think, oh nine. And at that point, there was no activity. So the board felt that the, the, the cold storage of the buildings out back would not, would not be more than what was there prior to, because it would be just, just a coming in and dropping off stuff. And I suspect if the, if the companies that are utilizing it now, that were just utilizing it as, as we had envisioned it, they may be using it for, like now, they would store their, their lawnmowers, and they may do plowing in the wintertime, but all the lawnmowers would be in there, and in the summertime, that would be out in there, their, their snow equipment would be in there. But that's not what happened. What happened was, they, they just went in and started opening businesses up in these buildings, and that, that wasn't what, what, what the board bargained for. So, and in, and in fact, I'm gonna ask Julie to answer a question. I, I had her go through the meeting, last meeting, just because, because I've been really sensitive to the fact that this, this property is, was, and now, in residential zone. It's not a commercial zone, it's a residential zone. So I asked Julie to go through the last meeting, and how many times did I, did I mention?
Ten times.
Yeah. It was, it was ten times that I mentioned at the last meeting that's a residential zone. It's not a commercial zone. What's going on there now would be acceptable in a commercial zone, but not in a residential zone. That's a business park.
I, I suggest that the use is similar to that which SD had. SD had administrative, well, I spoke with Howard SD before.
You're a hundred percent right, but, but.
No, I understand that the confines of the permit.
SD's had a building, and everything out there was related to SD's. Right now, we have a building that's vacant. I'm assuming something's gonna come in there. But, but all the business out there, they're all individual business. None of them's related to the building on front.
But the special permit envisioned that there'd be different people other than one entity leasing those places. Excuse me?
Storage only.
Okay, well, that's where, that's where the miscommunication comes in.
Not going in and operating your business out of there.
And we filed a new application to be allowed to do what we, we suggest is a good use of that property.
Yeah.
And administratively, everything's gonna be moved to the front, and if someone wants to do something administratively out back, they have to come to you for an individual special permit, and you can say yes, no, or these are the conditions that, that you have on that permit.
Well, the other thing that I, that I did ask Julie to do, and I appreciate her doing this, was that we took the number of buildings that are, that are there, and we made up applications for each one of those buildings that you can take, because whatever does happen.
Can I approach?
Oh, yeah. I do have some duct tape, though, but, you know.
Could I ask, question? You said you talked to one of, one of the SD's prior to all this?
Yes, yes. He's, he filed an affidavit with the new application.
I mean, I, to me, I mean, you know, bad facts make bad decisions, good facts hopefully make good decisions. I only, you know, from a cursory point of view, understand what went on there. It was a Lumbyard, it was a, a building supply outlet. But I think it would be helpful to the board to get it right, to get somebody with a, a personal knowledge that actually knew what the operations were at that location so that we can compare and contrast whether or not they are in fact, you know, what you want to do or what is, is currently there is more or less detrimental under the non-conformity.
Mister SD, Howard SD, one of the original owners since nineteen fifty-three, his father owned it before then. He filed with new application. I don't think it's appropriate to bring this into, in any detail, but he filed with the, the new application, a twenty-one paragraph affidavit, laying out what went on in the property since the time.
Each buildings and how many employees were there.
How many buildings, how many employees. In fact, the sawmill operated from December to May at one point, till ten PM at night.
What year was that?
It was over a series of years. You can read the affidavit when we have.
Hold on, just one.
I guess Mister SD's lying there.
Yeah.
I guess I am.
We're not gonna get into that. We're just talking, let him talk.
Point of order, this is not a public hearing anymore.
I understand that. And, and the point of order is, don't speak, because this is not a public hearing. No, the thing is, the, the letter that, and I, I have seen the letter, so I, I know.
The affidavit?
Yeah, I have seen it.
Okay.
I thought maybe it was gonna be here tonight, but, but at any rate, the thing, the thing that I want to impress upon you, sir, is that from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, when it was purchased, that, that information that he, that he supplied didn't, 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 you know, that's past history. And so I think that at, at best, you have to take from, from two thousand thirteen and try to reconstruct somewhere along the line, because, you know, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, there was nothing going on. Okay? So you could, you could say, if, if you want to maintain the use, which is what you do, you know, we can.
Well, there is another affidavit that I came into existence after I filed. Attorney Cronegard, apparently it wasn't given to you. That, that was an auction company leased space there for a while after SD stopped operating, and there was storage in there, and there was people paying for the storage in there. And I can produce that affidavit for the next meeting.
Yeah, well, that's, cold storage is exactly.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand, but.
There was no abandonment, so to speak.
Well, I, no, I understand. I, I'm not arguing that there was, but what I'm saying to you is that some of the stuff that I heard in the affidavit applied to years ago and not a current, even, even in oh nine, maybe the last year of oh nine, it, it wasn't what was going on at that point.
No, it's, the affidavit lays out the history of the property.
I understand. So, so, but, but you're trying to paint a picture that, you know, there was fifty-five employees there.
At one point in time, yes.
Yeah, maybe nineteen, probably in.
Yeah, it, it just lays out a history of what happened to the property.
So, yeah, and it probably was, but, but what I'm saying is that to have a better perspective, from oh nine to thirteen, it was almost dead.
There wasn't a lot of activity.
So we're trying, we're trying to give you, give, give a resurrection of the property that the, that the use is not gonna, not gonna be an impact on the, on the neighbors to such a point where it's gonna, it's gonna be more than what was there or perceived.
Non-conforming uses, though, the analysis should be what the history of the property is and whether it's more detrimental now than at once in operation over the fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years.
Yeah, but, but, but John, what's happened is that over the time,
Now, I, I hear what you're saying.
The operation went, if we had, if we had a line, the operation went down here.
I hear what you're saying.
So where, where do we say, okay, well now, somewhere between here and there is probably a happy medium, and say, this is what, what, you know, you can't do any more than halfway of that.
Well, that's, that's why we filed a new application, because we're gonna give you the opportunity to pick and choose what type of activity you want there. We feel the application reflects the use of the property over the years, and what we're proposing should be allowed by special permit without any alterations, but that's certainly your call.
Yeah, well, and I, and I think it's, it's all well and good that you, that we're gonna get a new application, and I think that's great. However, I, I still say that, that operating separate businesses there, from my way of thinking, isn't gonna work. So if that's what the application is, then.
Well, once we move all the administrative stuff to the front, it will be like an office space, and there'll be just basically storage, and a landscaper will put his, his machines there. And maybe if he wants to shop in the blades, he can do it, but he's not gonna be, you know, telephoning people from his shed unless he gets an emergency phone call. Everything will be conducted up front. And like I said, if somebody does want to operate out back administratively, they're gonna have to come to you for a special permit. That's what we're proposing. But everything else will be moved front.
Out of this whole thing, and you're right, I'm the one that said, let's refile this. Out of this whole thing, and you're right, I'm the one that said, let's refile this. The people in the neighborhood need to be heard. The town of Groveland needs a tax base, they need to have the tax base, we need it, we gotta offset our taxes. If you were gonna refile it and file it under a new permit, in another, in a special permit, each person has to come back before the zoning board that goes in there, what's it say?
What we're proposing is one special permit to start, telling you what we wanna do there. Then you are free to choose to allow certain things, not allow certain things, or say, this guy has to get an individual permit.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, you get a special permit based on what SD's did that's not more detrimental. So what's gonna happen, if you say, Bill, they did, they did fix trucks there, they did haul lumber in and out, they did have guys out back signing check sheets off, they did have fertilizer, how much fertilizer, I don't know, they had a hardware store, so if a guy comes along and says, I wanna put a chemical company back there, that's more detrimental to what SD's did.
Well, but they, you don't give a, you don't give a permit.
Where'd it go? So we need to do, we need to come to a fine line of what SD's did, and I think Mr. McDonald just kinda said that a minute ago, we come to a fine line of what they did.
Well, I, I think we can start, the basis of starting is the affidavit that I filed, and that, and if you want more information from Mr. SD, I don't know at his age, he could, he might wanna come here, but he certainly can answer some questions in writing.
I just finished, I just, so this here, by, but, I understand what you're saying, have a special permit to, to get the, the ball rolling, and each, each individual company going in there needs to come in before the board, so now the neighbors can have their say, they can be involved in it.
Well, if, if you wanna put that condition on, that's certainly within your purview.
Well...
The, the one, the downside on a special permit for each individual, and it's been the complaint in this town all along, is that I heard of, I hate to say it, a lawyer who wanted to locate into town and got upset that a one-person law firm had to file $650 for a special permit. I mean, that special permit requirement, broadly speaking, is, I think, deters businesses. However, in our proposal, we're gonna send you a questionnaire that each less C has to answer, the nature of their business, what they're gonna do, that's for our use, and we're gonna send it to the board, and then at your next meeting, you say, wait a minute, this guy needs to come in for a special permit.
To go back a step.
Yeah.
I wanna put a stop measure in there, where everyone that goes in there registers their business in the town of Groveland and has to pay tax. When the, when this came first before this board, I was a big advocate for that, they need to come before her. So however it starts in the beginning, they need to come before the board, register as a business, we get the tax revenue, whatever they're gonna have to pay for taxes legally, whatever, and then turn around, they really should have to, like everyone else in town does it, if I wanna have a business, anyone else, you have to pay $650, here nor there. It, it, it is what it is, you know what I'm saying?
Let, let me just say, as far as the tax base, I spoke with the assessor and the manager, and I said, I gave her the, copied the application we filed, I said, if you can think of any communication you wanna send to the board as a condition that would alert the assessors to help increase the tax base and businesses coming in, by all means, so that, that's part of our proposal, we want, we're gonna give you information, every new less C that comes in, they're gonna fill out a questionnaire with us, we're gonna send it to you, and then you can make a decision, whether you want a special permit for everybody, that's a condition you can put on.
A question...
I, I don't think it would be, I think it would be detrimental, I think it should be pick and choose.
A question would be, what would happen with the people that are there now, that if they're more detrimental? If there's people in there right now that are more detrimental what SD's did, what happens to them?
Then they have to leave.
Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
In fact, I'm trying to get, gather facts, and again, that, you know, to apply the law and what, what is more or, or less, or equal detriment in, in the prior, you know, it has to start with what the prior use was. Do you, do you have any information on what was done in each of the buildings that were existing? For, for instance, i- 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 if it was a sawmill and they had a milling operation in one of the buildings, I mean, certainly to me, that rises to a, a higher level than just called storage.
Yeah.
So it seems to be an application of the law that a, a, a non-conforming use...
In, in speaking with Mr. SD...
Would be more than, uh, uh, higher than that, but certainly not, not rise to the level of chemical storage.
In speaking with Mr. SD, I, I tried to get a handle on how a sawmill ran, and besides just having a big saw, they also manufactured like bondboard, something they called Pickwick siding.
Yeah.
Tongue and groove.
Yeah.
Pressure-treated lumber?
No, 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 no.
I think, I think they put together Anderson windows back in the 60s and 70s, 'cause Anderson didn't...
Final windows, yeah.
And they had a, what they call a planning room, and, and some other type of room, they had a...
They had several, several saws, several plings.
Yeah, and they had a...
But every building didn't have some kind of machine work. A lot of those buildings were storage.
No, there was, there was storage.
Cold storage, like you were referring to.
But it was, it was a mix, it was a mix.
It was a mix, but not nearly the 50/50, there was, I think I remember four or five buildings that actually had...
Now, his, his...
Well, knowing those details...
Yeah.
How can we, uh, 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 how, how could I apply the law to what was more or less detrimental, not knowing whether or not it was a manufacturing facility and building X versus, you know, it was just stacked pallets?
Storage, right.
Uh, 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 you know, a rack storage or, or, in building Y. So, you know, I, I, again, bad facts make bad decisions, I, I wanna apply the law properly.
Mr. Harper, he knows the town better than I do. He says they, they, he can bring in people who worked there, if you wish, to explain, to give testimony for lack of a better word.
I think we need more information, because, you know, who has firsthand knowledge that they were there and what they did? I mean, we're, we're getting a, a history lesson from...
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, John, the, one other thing that, that concerned me also when I was there was, in the building, which would be coming back towards Main Street, the building on the left, in front of where the true green was, it appeared that there's a, there's a brand-new roof to a section that according to the plan was like a carport, and it's now enclosed. And so I'm, I'm wondering how, how that happened, there's, there's several examples that happened.
I can, I could, I could say that a person can build along his footprint and enclose it without, he has a general building permit to rehab the buildings.
Yeah, but, but that's an expansion of the square foot.
Well, no, I, I think it's, it's, it's the footprint, I would argue it's the footprint, and he's just enclosing the footprint that was the carport. Do you know?
Yeah, that's the, that's the portion of the building that collapsed.
It collapsed.
And it's on the same footprint. It's new foundation, but it's on the same footprint.
Was it open before?
Partially.
I'll ask you, again, was it open before?
Partially, it had openings and it had walls.
Is it open now?
I don't know, I haven't been there for a while.
It isn't. I got a picture, I can't show you the picture, 'cause I took it without permission, but I'm not gonna show it, I just want it for my own pea brain.
I, I would add that you can...
John, I think we're on a, we're on, we're on a good track.
Okay.
Okay, I, I feel better, we're on a good track, and we don't wanna beat a dead horse. If, if no one's got any real questions, I think we're on a good track here. I like the fact that we're moving this stuff out front, that there seems to be some, some understanding of what needs to happen, and possibly with this new application, we'll find out what's gonna happen.
Well, I think it's, we, we may have more than one meeting, but we'll, we'll put as much detail into this as you folks want, and the neighbors want.
Well, I, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, I mean, right now, I mean, unless anyone has any, any other questions, I think that we could move to continue the, the application till next meeting, when you submit the new plans, and then we'll work on that, we'll have a public hearing where the people will speak, they'll be notified, and the application has, has been filed, and, and it'll be, everyone, all the abutters, the same abutters that were notified before.
And just so...
I would hope that maybe the applicant would meet with the neighbors before to maybe give them a briefing, so that it's not, you know, cold turkey at night.
Yeah, that's up to Mr. Harper, we've, we've discussed it. Also, the, we're meeting preliminary, preliminarily with the planning board on our site plan and aquifer protection on the six, and I think we'd like to keep the neighbors informed all the way.
Well, you know, one of the things that, that I did notice when I was there, I noticed, oh, along the right-hand side, I saw what, what appeared to be dirt berms the whole way down. And I'm not exactly clear on how it works in Massachusetts, but I know that you're a couple of hundred feet from that water body out there, and I didn't see any BMPs, and BMPs is, would be best management practice or erosion control methods.
That's the Concom, we filed with them the first of December, we have to have a meeting with them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, do the contractors, I mean, in, in...
The berms I saw seemed to be outside the resource area, but there are some concerns on the resource area.
Well, but the, the fact is that they're, they need to be protected, in, in, in my experience of enforcing, and I used to enforce that stuff, when you had a, a pile of dirt, you had to either hail, put the bales of hay around them...
I think it's only if it's in the resource area.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, well, then, then, then...
If it is, we'll, we'll deal with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it would just seem that, that with, with winter coming...
Yeah.
Snow, runoff...
Well, we're gonna, hopefully it will be before Concom this month.
Yeah, okay. Well, if anyone doesn't have any other questions, do you have any questions, Mike? You got any more, Bill? Jane?
No.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that, that we continue this to the December, what, January?
January.
I'm sorry. January 7th, 7th meeting, and that there'll be a hearing at that time, and you'll be prepared.
Hearing on the new application?
Yeah, hearing on the new application.
Yeah.
And would you like, we, we can bring in people that work there, I don't know if I can get Mr. SD here.
Well, I, I think that, as Dan said, I think we, we need to have as, as many people as we can to, to, so that we can have a basis.
Yeah.
But, 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 but keep in mind, what, what I'm saying is that from, from point A to point B, which was high to low, there's a happy medium.
What I'll try to do is, now that we have a site plan, I'll try to go over with Mr. SD, and as Mr. Wood would like to know, what buildings were storage, what were mechanical, and see if we can delineate which buildings, which will give you an idea.
And, and so, so I, I, I think you understand where the board's coming from.
Sure.
That, that if there was storage there, then we expect it to be storage.
Okay, and if they wanted to do something different, they'd have to come to individual special permit, that would be my position.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second?
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Well, keep them in your files, I mean, I, I give it to, I mean, they should have them, we, we, we've gotta get this resolved.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, even to the point where, like, like Bill says, there's people in there now that shouldn't be there.
Well, we're gonna, it, it's a work in progress, but we're gonna get it done.
Yeah, all right.
We're gonna do it right.
Okay, uh, okay, all set? Well, under, go ahead.
I just have one question, please.
Your name?
Diane LaFrance, one more question.
I'm right up here, if you would, so we can see it.
I'm speaking on behalf of the abutters, the ones that could attend, the others didn't know the meeting was tonight, not on the website, is, we would like to know when the enforcement is going to start.